Brandon, South Dakota. Planning and Zoning Commission, November 16, 2023, meeting to order, 6:30 PM, Central Standard Time. And we'll have a roll call, please.
Brian.
Present.
Thomas.
Here.
Brooks.
Here.
Rob.
Here.
Alyssa.
Here.
Michael.
Here.
Tim.
Tim is not here. We have a, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Some of it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I, we have a consent calendar, one plat, a Bennigan addition, tracks one B and two A. Do we have a motion to?
Some of it.
Second.
To approve, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Approval of minutes, I do see one typo in the minutes. And that is in the paragraph dealing with the home occupation permit. A neighbor spoke, her name is Brita Barnes, Brita is spelled B-I-R-T-A. And I know that because I've known her since she was a little kid, so. I don't know if Barnes is spelled correctly or not, but just thought I'd mention that. Otherwise, I'll approve, entertain a motion to approve.
Some of it.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We have, under old business, we have a conditional use application for Brandon Wellness.
Do we have? We have a public comment period first.
Oh, you're right, I forgot. I skipped, any, we have a public comment, that is for, anybody in the audience can get up, talk about anything they want, unless if they're on the agenda, we'll get to that when we get to that agenda item. Anybody want to say anything? Not seeing anybody jump up, so we'll get to the conditional use application business. Old business under number seven, that's the Brandon Wellness. Do we have any new information since the last time?
We do not, I spoke with Mike from Brandon Wellness, he requested that it be continued to a further meeting, so I will leave that up to you all. How long you want to continue, what are your thoughts on that?
Let's move it to the first meeting in January. If they come with anything before that, we can go ahead.
You making that a motion?
I moved to make, move it to the first meeting in January.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, what's next? We have to adjourn the planning and zoning meeting. We need a?
We have the rezone application.
Is that, oh, see, usually I have that on paper and I can cross it, check them off, but no, that's okay, we're so far through it now, it doesn't matter, but that's okay. All right, rezone application.
So the applicant has withdrawn their application to rezone 1400 South Sioux.
Alrighty. 1400 South Sioux, they withdrew their application for rezoning, so we will move on to, now, do we need a motion to adjourn and re?
You do to?
We do.
Adjourn at the board of, planning and zoning and reconvene as the board of adjustment.
I forget every time.
Move to readjourn.
Second.
Okay, any discussion, all in favor?
Hold a comment on that at all or not?
On the rezone?
Yeah, since it, so it's not going to be rezoned?
Correct, they withdrew their application, they did so yesterday, late morning-ish, I think it was, sometime in there, so it was, I tried to contact as many people as I could, but it's hard to get a hold of everybody that would have gotten notice, but, so they have withdrawn their plans to rezone.
Is that, now, if, would they be eligible to bring that rezone request back to us in the future?
They would, since it's withdrawn, or whoever buys it could, they, we, they would have to renotice everything and resubmit a new application. So new notices would go out should whoever buys the property decide to rezone again, just something, whatever it is.
So it stays as it was.
Yep, so until further notice, stays as it is, yeah.
Yep.
Thank you guys.
Okay, do I have a, a motion pending to adjourn the planning and zoning and, and so, discussion? No, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, and we will convene the Board of Adjustment. We won't do a, we'll call to order the meeting, the, the Board of Adjustment, we won't do a roll call because it's all the same people, I need a motion.
Make a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Second. All right, discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, and new business, we're on number 12 of our agenda now, a variance application for 313 West Hackberry Street. If you're following along on the packets on page 57.
Just for everyone's reference, on the screen behind you is the Google view of the property, this appears to be what it was before, we do have handout pictures in front of you of how it currently looks, the other handouts in front of you are the past two variance applications that this board has considered regarding relatively the same concept, each situation is different, but this kind of involves the same thing, the placement of a driveway, so.
Mm-hmm.
And if you want a copy of the pictures or anything, we can give you one.
Yep. And in the spirit of full disclosure, Tim Jorgensen, who usually chairs the meeting, lives next door to this property, so that is why he is not here today and I am chairing the meeting. So our, is our applicant here, is that you, you want to come up to the podium, please, and just press the button on the side or the front of the thing and a little, no, you don't have to hold it down, just press it, a little red light should, nope, that didn't happen, yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you.
And just ask, say your name, please, and your address.
All right, I'm Dean Darren, 313 West Hackberry. I went to the city to get a legal description because I wanted to do some, some cement along the side and also put a building in the back. And Paul gave me a copy of the plot and the house and when it was built, on what the dimensions and everything and how they were, and he told me at that time that should, that should be official. And so I took it as that and I went and got a contractor and we did the, the cement work. And after we finished, Paul came by and says, well, where are the property, have you seen the property lines? I said, no, I didn't know I need to have the property lines, I have this description. He said, well, you have to find the property lines. So it took me a while, I found a couple of them and I couldn't find all of them, so I went to DGR Engineering and had them survey it. And, well, I actually found three of them, I couldn't find the fourth one, well, it was right behind, it was right under the fence post, right where the fence post was, so they couldn't find it. But anyhow, they found it and they told me that, and they checked the rest of the ones in my neighborhood to make sure that, that they were all in the right place. And they said that they were, so I'm, the, the plot that he gave me was off a little bit, so I'm a foot and a half, I'm only five and a half feet from the property line rather than seven feet. I've talked to the neighbors, the neighbors have no problem with it, and Tim is one of my neighbors. And we decide, anyhow, so, and then I, I built a, a building in the back, 12 by 16 building in the back. And when I, when we poured the concrete, my question is, is why do I only have to be five feet from the property line on the building in the back and I have to be seven feet in the front with a cement pad? That doesn't make any sense to me at all, but anyhow, I'm not arguing about that, I would just like to have a, a variance for that foot and a half because it was, I'm not blaming Paul, he thought it was right and, and, but it didn't turn out that way, so I'd like to get a variance if I could.
Okay, is there anybody in the audience who wants to talk about this? Come up and talk, I don't see anybody jumping up, so, does anybody on the Planning and Zoning Commission have any questions?
So, a couple of comments, so, it appears to me that what was given to you by the city is from the original building permit.
Right.
You know, it's not this, it's not the city's responsibility to go out and redraw what the, you know, what the contractor submitted on their initial building permit application, so, you know, Paul, Paul gave you the information that he had best knowledge of as being there. But I also note on the, on the permit, on the left-hand side there, under scope of work, parking pad and pad for lawn shed by Scolton Company, lawn shed by owner, property line to be verified. So it says on the building permit that the property lines needed to be verified, I would assume we would take that to mean prior to starting construction, so, you know, your contractor, as a licensed contractor that did the concrete work, should have done their due diligence, have you contacted them about making the corrections?
Uh, no. He knew there was a problem, but I haven't, I haven't contacted him. I do know this, that the, all the contractors, and I tried, I had a tough time finding somebody to get to do the cement work, I talked to about three or four different contractors, and they all told me that they do a lot of work in Sioux Falls and it's only five feet in Sioux Falls, they just couldn't figure out why it was seven feet here.
I have, I have a question, that, what exactly goes into the, the side yard setback, the cement or the rock, or does the rock count or not?
Just a hard surface.
Just a, the rock doesn't count.
Right, that's landscaping, but you cannot park on that.
So that point, that point is what goes into the, or is it farther up?
Well, I think the point, yeah.
The point, the point and all the way back, or just?
Right, right, yeah.
The point and all the way back?
Yes, it starts to turn, all that is only five and a half feet.
Okay. And we're talking about, what, what'd you say, a foot and a half?
Yeah.
Does the city require people to, to verify their lot lines before they start on projects?
They, we tell them.
When somebody gets a?
Fence permit, shed permit, whatever it may be.
Kind of building permit, you say?
Right, you've got to find the proper fence. Many times a homeowner will say something to the nature of, well, my fence, and I say, no, let's stop right there, it's got to be your property line, we don't, we don't, we don't care about fences, they may be closed, but you've got to find those property fence, when you go out there and do the actual work.
Okay, do we have an ordinance that says it has to be done, or?
Well, the ordinance says it has to be seven feet, so?
Yeah.
A homeowner has to verify that.
Sure.
Because the city does not find property fence, so.
Any other discussion?
So just for my clarification here, the, um, the application shows a five-foot setback on the shed and a seven-foot setback on the parking, is the shed in compliance, but the parking is not?
Yes, the shed's okay.
So the shed was measured off the property line, but the driveway was not?
I'm sorry?
So the shed was measured off the property line?
Yeah.
But the driveway was not? One clarification item, Mr. Clark, when the applicant came in, did you tell them the requirement for the seven-foot setback?
Yes, and the site plan shows it's going to be seven foot, yeah, so. I can't remember exactly verbally telling you, but I'm sure it came up in the conversation. And then, it actually looks like that, and Alyssa may have been the one that signed, so she would have been there probably initially, there have been conversations with both of us a lot, he made multiple trips in the city hall, so between the two of us, but when you have a, a sign, a site plan that says seven feet, that's the, the document that rules, so.
Patrick, we have here some papers that you gave us that talk about similar situations that have happened in recent memory, can you enlighten us on those, please?
So the first one on there is the one that is the, the court, the court opinion from Minnehaha County, so it looks like in that case, I personally do not have a memory of this case, Paul might, but I do not, it looks like a variance was given to this homeowner that they could put it at three feet, then the homeowner apparently did not comply with that, and then a court had to get involved and cut back the pavement to meet the variance. And in the subsequent one, in 2020, it looks like it was an outright denial of a variance application to reduce the side yard setback for parking. So those are the two prior things we have, and in that case, you have a letter from the city attorney to the property owner there explaining that they need to cut back the property line, as the Board of Adjustment had denied the variance. So that's the past precedent that I could find, and that, and that's city staff remembered, and if you have any questions about particular situations, I'm sure Mr. Clark has a working knowledge of them.
So, Patrick, on both of these examples, these were situations where it was installed incorrectly, not that we came in and asked for the variance, I had it correct.
Correct, that's my understanding.
Right, yes.
And without knowing the facts of the first one, I'm not sure why the variance was approved. Yes, yep, Rob might.
This one was, I, we were going to build a house next door to it, that's why this got brought up, this one did, because they were encroaching on the property to the north, the fence in the concrete, if I remember right. And when it was submitted to the city, the site plan, it was flipped from what was built, that's what happened with that, and then it never got, whatever, never got caught or whatever, until there was a house being built to the north, and then that's when it all got brought up to attention. So the site plan actually got flipped from what was submitted to the city and never was resubmitted for the right site plan. Who was that located at?
Garnet Circle.
I think it's Garnet Circle, up in Stone Ridge.
Oh, okay, yeah, I remember that now. The Gorges, but Robinson, one on the other side.
And those were provided to you just because consistency is important, you want to make sure everyone is treated the same as an equal shot.
So, okay, so make sure I know what we're talking about, then, so in that case, they had to cut it back?
They were given a variance to reduce, but then they?
But then they?
Decided not to comply with the variance, they just wanted to keep what they had, so then a court had to step in and force them to cut it back. And in the second case, the variance wasn't granted at all.
And so then, and that was already installed and the variance was not granted, so?
They had to go back and hire someone to rip it up.
I know we've also had this issue, I think it was over on the west side of town, that property that had the retaining?
I'm, I'm sorry, I don't hear well, so I don't?
We also had the same situation where, over on the west side of town, on the cul-de-sac, that house with the retaining wall issue, the fence was installed over the property line, the driveway was installed out of compliance, and they, they also had to go in and make those corrections as well.
What was the purpose of this cement? What are you planning to do with it?
I'm just using it to park a car or something alongside there. But to be honest with you, I'm trying to sell it now, because I'm going to move into Bethany, Bethany Homes there, into their twin homes there. I'm 83 years old, so I, I just don't feel like doing all that other stuff anymore.
So if we grant it, it can stay as is, if we deny it, looks like you'd have to shave off a foot and a half all the way back.
Or what?
Well, like this example here, the law, a city lawyer would contact you and then, what, get a lawyer and then it goes to court or?
So the city attorney, most likely, this is a realm for Lisa to answer, but my general understanding is based on past case, Lisa will reach out to you if we can't get anywhere, requesting that you do it, if not, we can find you every day, it exists, we can get a judge to force you to do it, there's a lot of remedies cities have.
Excuse me, what about all these people that haven't complied before that you've let go? I mean, I can, I can, I got pictures of, of places where, where they haven't complied and nothing has seemed to happen, I haven't heard anything anyhow.
The city responds to things not in compliance on a case-by-case basis, Paul doesn't drive around looking for violations, you would need to submit documentation to Paul and he will do his code enforcement job based on what is submitted.
So I'd have been better off just to go ahead and do it and, and not, not to try and be within the law, is that right?
It is always recommended that you comply with the law.
Well, right, I tried to, I, I originally tried to do that and if I'd have noticed that, that the thing said that I had to be trying to property lines, I, I would have first before I did that, but I didn't realize that, I thought it was okay, so I went ahead and, and did it, so.
I would offer a suggestion that you talk to your contractor that did the work, you know, contractors are supposed to know, know the ordinances, know the codes, and I think they have, they have some responsibility and liability in this issue, so.
Okay.
I would suggest you reach out to the contractor that you hired to do your work, because it's, they should, they should review the building permit as part of their, part of their responsibility, they should know what they're doing, they should know, they should have read, verify the property lines. They should know when they're laying things out, if it says seven feet off the property line, you should verify seven feet off the property line, no different than seven feet off the house, so at that point, they should have raised the red flag and said, hey, we got an issue here, what would you like us to do? So.
Okay.
And in my opinion, your contractor owes you some responsibility for this issue, so.
Yeah, I appreciate that you were going through the process and came to the city first and approached the, the project in that way, and it's unfortunate the way this turned out, but I, you know, seeing the site plan, even though it references seven feet, I just, I keep coming back to that. On the permit, it says right on there that the property line must be verified, and I, unfortunately, I just think that that's the responsibility between the owner and the contractor to have done that before something permanent is put in place, so I'm having a hard time with that part of it, and I understand the situation you're in, but, and, and I think it maybe opens up an issue too, of if something was parked there, it's parked in the side yard setback as well, it's not only a piece of cement, it's also that a vehicle could be parked there, and that's something that, you know, the setbacks are in, in, in great part there for safety and separation of buildings for fire and other emergencies, so, you know, a vehicle encroaching on that does add to that risk, so that's another place where I have a little difficulty with it.
And also, I would think that if you are trying to sell your, if you are trying to sell your home now, that if there are issues with it, that might cause you some problems in selling, so.
I understand that, yeah, yeah.
So I'd entertain a motion unless there's more discussion.
I'll make a motion to deny the application.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to deny, any further discussion? Then I would say all in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carried, I'm sorry, sir.
Well, that's the way it goes. I, I am wondering though, why you accepted this one for three feet before, and then, of course, it didn't turn out, but you had accepted it, so what was the deal there? Why, why would you accept that one and not mine?
City staff did not accept it or grant a variance, the variances are granted by the Board of Adjustment, you would have, you'd have to go back into the minutes and find out if there is an explanation why one was granted and one was not, we do not have that information offhand, but you can come in and maybe Paul can track something down for you, but city staff does not grant variances.
Oh, and when we do grant variances, we usually need to identify some kind of hardship that exists with the land, like maybe it, so, you know, it's on a slope or, for, you know, whatever reason. You did ask a question in, I, I think maybe we could see if we could answer that, is why is the setback for the shed five feet, the setback for the driveway seven feet? Do we know the answer to that?
That was a decision made by Planning and Zoning.
Yeah.
One probably relates to one being a building and one being a place where a car is located, so it's a little bit different, but ultimately, the city of Brandon is not Sioux Falls, Sioux Falls has different ordinances than Brandon, Brandon has the independence to come up with its own determinations on setbacks, building heights, maximum lot sizes, what have you, so our zoning ordinance is a different standard, so.
I, sheds are smaller, sheds have, sheds also have restrictions on them overall height.
So, sheds are smaller, sheds have, sheds also have restrictions on them, overall height, overall square footage of those, so they do have other restrictions on them, not just, not just a setback distance, so.
And sheds, you move them, you think you can move them? I, I don't know, they're usually on, they don't, they have puddings? They don't have basements?
Yeah, they don't have puddings, the building could really exist lawn sheds, but they're, they're permanent enough to where they cannot be in easement, so if there's any work, it has to be in easement, those are not easily moved, so generally sheds are not moved, you know.
Okay.
We, we had, we had one moved in the last two weeks because an applicant did not pull a permit, found it to be the wrong space and she had to move it, so. And another comment I'd like to make, and I think somebody's already alluded to it, is that Patrick did, is that, you know, other jurisdictions have setbacks, zoning rules for different, but it would not be the first time where a contractor does so much work in Sioux Falls, they just assumed, which is a terrible thing to do, that Brandon would be the same when it comes to setbacks and that's what they have to learn.
Yes, Kim, Shilton, the contractor, he had to get the permit here because he hadn't done anything in Brandon before and he came and got the permit and went to you guys and talked to you. In fact, he was in here two or three different times to get things squared away, so I thought that everything was, I think everything was okay, so.
Well, his licensing, he had to came multiple times to get his?
Yeah, he had to get a license, right.
But, but I believe, I believe that's sort of signature on the application, so when, you know, the person who actually pulled the permit, I believe was you, sir, yeah.
I, I also talked to my neighbor, Tim Jorgensen, and he, he told me that he had tried several times to get a change to five feet rather than seven, but was unable to get anything done. And I, I don't know, it's, that's you guys' business, not mine, but I, but I, I really think that, that it's, it's kind of, he says it's a, it's a fire problem? Well, I'll tell you what, that cement ain't gonna burn.
With the car on it, right?
Huh?
With the car on it, right?
With, with car on it, it might, yes, it might, but.
It also has to do with, with protection of neighbors. A lot of houses don't have windows on their sides, but many of them do.
Neither one of my neighbors are fine with it, I'll tell you one more thing.
I understand that, but what, what happens, sir, is if, if we allow, if we allow it in your situation, basically it sets precedence that everybody would be allowed five feet because there's no hardship. And so legally, if we allow it for you, we have to allow it for everybody because there's nothing that.
My neighbor on the other side, when they found the property lines, he thought they were a couple of feet more over my way than they were, he's only four and a half feet from my property line.
Are Jorgensen's on your garage side or the other side?
It's the other side. Well, the garage side is where I have my, but, but this is on the, this would be on the east side, yeah.
But do Jorgensen's live on?
They live on the west side by, by, where?
Next to your driveway.
Where the property, where is, the dispute is, yes.
I wondered which side they lived on.
Yeah.
You can have, if you correct me if I'm wrong, you can have concrete come out of an access door, direct sidewalk, right, to another driveway, correct, on a side, even if it's in that seven foot?
A walking pad, a walking pad, piece of concrete can be laid within five feet, a parking pad, seven feet, the, the, so increased, so. So if that was just a walking pad?
Okay, so I just want it for a walking path?
Well, that would be a whole, another process.
Yeah, but you're on the record tonight.
Because, yeah, because we've already voted on this one.
Right, yes.
Yeah, I hope you have good luck with your contractor though.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, back to the top of the page here. And so, an entertaining motion to adjourn the Board of Adjustment? And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carried. And so, and we've already adjourned Planning, so it looks like we're done for tonight, is there anything else we need to review or?
So, he took off, but for the record, should he come back and watch the video or come in and talk again? There are rights to appeal Board of Adjustment decisions, you can appeal to the city council, you can appeal to court, there are some options there. To appeal to the city council, we need written notice within five working days after this written decision, so if he could, if that is his wish, we need that soon, so he does have rights to appeal.
Thank you for saying that, I like how you always say things for, I think for the entire public's benefit too. Looks like we have some items on our agenda for our next meeting, which will be December 7th, so we'll see you all then. And otherwise, we're done for tonight. No, did you have something? The official time is 7:06, 7:06 PM Central Standard Time. Yeah, you betcha. Happy Thanksgiving.